I'd like to call this meeting order. We'll call, please, Ms. Stamen.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Mr. Camerisher.
Here.
Mrs. Conklin. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wugley.
Here. Please rise and join me in the presence of the agents.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding the evening's agenda? Not, I will take a motion.
And move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Camerisher, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I will take a motion for a closed session.
Executive session?
I want the board hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51i of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation as that individual has requested a closed session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Ms. Ayers, that the board hold a closed session as provided in section 21.51i of the open meetings law to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose hiring is being considered to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation. So that individual has requested a closed session. We'll call, well, please, Ms. Stamen.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Camerisher.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Vision statement. It is a vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the funds, academic, and extracurricular programs for the state. Not in some things, but in all things. For some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to bring up any items that are non-agenda items, if you'd like to bring them up, this is your opportunity to do so. All you have to do is come up to the front of the podium, state your name and your capacity in the district, and you will get three minutes to state what you have, as long as it's a non-agenda item. Since it is a non-agenda item, we will not be able to comment on it, but we definitely do hear what you're saying. And if you are going to bring up anything, we would request that you please keep any names confidential. Is there anybody here who would like to bring up a non-for the agenda item? Okay. Great. Seeing none, we'll move on to board members. Mr. Smith?
The only thing I want to call out is the golf team, the girls' golf team and the girls' track team, both on their championships for the state titles. And, you know, they have one, that's one thing, but they have two of them with spring sports. It's awesome. That'll pass.
Yep. Wonderful to hear. Mr. Camerisher?
So last week, I managed to attend the Computer Science Academy, which are seniors from Pleasant Valley and Bettendorf in combination with John Deere staff, presenting their final project, Truce's Software Development Program led by professionals. They were as impressive this year as they were last year, and it's actually a program, I'll be reaching out to Bernie, talk about how we can improve or increase the number of participants in it. In addition, I want to wish the boys soccer team best luck tomorrow in their match against Waukees Northwest out in Des Moines. Quick mention for graduation went smoothly. Thank you, Dr. Wugley and Mr. Ayers, for guiding me through how all that went down. And then a big congratulations to girls' state track. I'm sure Benny, Bernie will maybe detail that later. And then my last one is, wow, I'm impressed. Owen Childs managing to get into the Olympic trials for swimming. Wow. That's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ms. Brockman?
After Director Camerisher, I have nothing. I was just going to also congratulate all of the graduates and thank the elementary school PTAs for assisting with kindergarten roundup this past week.
Thank you.
I'd also want to congratulate all the seniors that graduated and everyone who had a hand in putting together the graduation. It went extremely well, so thank you very much for that. Congratulations to Becky Larson, who is a teacher at Bridgeview for a number of years. She was able to pass out diplomas with us this year on Sunday. It was really great to be able to see her up there with us. And thank you to all of the elementary buildings for hosting your seniors the Thursday before. I think that was something that they all look forward to, going back and being in their old hallways. So it was, the events that I saw were very good, so thank you very much. Sorry. We all have a quota of words to meet.
Before I turn over, I just want to also thank the Forest Grove PTA. This is School Board Appreciation Month, and they provided us a nice little meal today and then some nice little plans. So thank you very much for your generosity for all the school board members. All right, Mr. Kluysman?
I have nothing.
Mr. Hyde?
So just a couple. I want to echo Brent's sentiments on the senior walk-off. What a special event that is for young and old and everywhere in between to see our graduates celebrating this benchmark in their journey and to hear what their plans are moving forward. What a great way of spreading joy, but also vision for our young ones in our elementary buildings. So that's a special event. And another tradition we're going to talk about later, and I just, there's so much this end of the year as people are talking to celebrate. And I really anchor that to the word tradition. There are some awesome traditions in our community that seemingly always focus on growth and learning. And I'm grateful for that in this position. And the last one is, with just, I think, six and a half days remaining, a good reminder to all of us to finish Spartan strong, all the way through the finish line.
Ms. Kenyon?
I just have to echo. So being back in Iowa, I got to experience my first Iowa, or state track meet in a long time. I went to see one of my best friend's son who had a lot of events he was in. And I have to tell you, man, there was nothing like being PV proud there. I had a PV, they were giving me a hard time, my friends from Urbandale, that I had my PV Spartan shirt on. And watching our girls, I mean, I happened to make it to, like, their races. It was just exciting. It was so cool to watch. So I just have to add, it was a lot of PV proud moments. And even some of my friends from other districts are like, oh, yeah, you, they're great at everything. So it was just, it was a fun time to be a Spartan down at the state track meet, so.
Just wanted to let everybody know, we'll be giving a comprehensive overview of the accomplishments of our spring athletes in June. I'm going to work with Mrs. Kramer to make sure that we recognize everybody who deserves that recognition. And there's lots of them, as you've mentioned. But I do have a few other things I'd like to mention. So we have some updates from our engineering students. So they have competed in the Quad City Engineering and Science Council Competition, which is a yearly competition. A couple weeks ago, they competed in the Trebuchet Competition, which is to launch raw eggs at targets at three specified distances, 75, 100, and 125 feet. Each team got four shots at each distance with the two best shots counting for scoring, along with the points for the longest throw. So our students performed very well. PV had four of the 13 teams that were represented. We received first overall. We received second overall and then fourth overall as well. We also received first and second in the distance throw, which was exciting. Part of the same competition is the cardboard boat regatta. We also did well there. Again, teams from area high schoolers designed and construct a one-to-three person vessel made from cardboard, and it has to be maneuverable and stay afloat for approximately 600 yards. And they competed down at the Bettendorf Middle Park Lagoon. They are timed from the moment they leave the lagoon dock to the time they return with the fastest time winning the race competition. And then there's two other awards that are given. The most innovative design, as well as the best being design. We did have a few go down with their ship, but the majority made it through the course. We did receive second place and third place. And Mr. Fransenberg also mentioned that he thinks that we got fourth and fifth, but those places do not meddle. And we also had a student receive the innovation award, which is very exciting. So congratulations to them. And then a special congratulations to our students who competed at the state Special Olympics Track and Field Event. And I'll have Mrs. Kenyon go ahead and announce those names.
Yeah, so we had Maxwell Fenella, Mia T. Patel, Noah Peterson, Maddie Ramirez, and Divij Riat. So those were our students that competed at the state Special Olympics Track and Field Event.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Right, Ms. Stamen, anything?
First of all, there is an updated personnel listing in your board packet, but I also want to thank everyone involved in the Bridgeview Memorial Day celebration, specifically our American Legion from Leclerc. If you've never been to that event, you have to go. It's fabulous. Jared Richardson, who is going to be leading the event, led the event one day. It was terrific. Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but 23 years in the Air Force?
Twenty-four years, 18 days.
Thank you so much. It was outstanding. I also want to thank Jared Dower, Drew Anderson, Mark Tiesken. As you all know, the band performs at graduation. They turn around, load up again. Freshman band performs at this event. And I can't tell you how many people, it was obvious because Mr. Krylen gave me this. People were talking to me. Wouldn't have known to talk to me. But are you kidding? Those were the freshmen? Yes, those are the freshmen. Absolutely outstanding. It's fabulous. Our high school head custodian, Paul White, also retired from the Navy, right?
Yes.
Okay. He, on his day off, comes and makes sure everything's set up, and then he tears down afterwards. Just, I mean, what a thing to do. You know, I'm on my off to make sure that all goes smoothly. And set up, Legion members and students took care of set up on Friday, wasn't it? So it's huge. When you need to fill the Bridgeview gym with chairs, it's a big project. But anyway, thank you. And Drew watching and Karen, thank you. It's fabulous, and you absolutely must go if you've never been.
Thank you. Ms. Truce?
Just two things real quick tonight. First of all, I do want to say a thank you to our bus drivers, to our staff, and to our administrators, and to our parents for their flexibility last Friday when we had the weather storms kick in. It's never the perfect timing for that. We've been tracking the storm all morning, and then it was just severe thunderstorms. And at 8:10, of course, it goes into tornado warning right away at that point. Luckily, we had all of our students were on the buses at 8:10 heading to the elementary school. Junior high and high schools were already in. Our administrators all stepped up. They had the kids in the hallway at every single level as soon as they arrived until at 8:45 when it was finally cleared. But there's a reason why you practice your drills, and you put people in place, and that was what all worked out that day. So nerve-wracking for everyone, but even at nine o'clock, we were still having kindergarten registration opportunities. So it went off well. So again, sorry for all the stress that that caused, but thank you to everyone who made it much easier. Second of all, I just want to echo again with the graduation. It is, I can't say enough. I had comments, text messages from parents saying just how classy, how thankful they were for how it goes off. Again, if you've never been to one of our graduations, it is just really neat to listen to from our band playing, the military songs, and having everyone in the stands stand up when their song is played, to Legion coming in, our teachers, who were all there to help kids get in the right rows and just organize it and be escorts there. So just a great event all the way around. And our speakers, our kids do a great job with their graduation speeches, too. And then thanks to the three of you. So really appreciate, greatly thank our kids for their, being such good kids. They were, it's just a neat ceremony. So thanks to them and wish all of them the best in their future.
It was a very, very good event, as it always is. Yes?
I wanted to add to what Brian just said about the band, that the choral group was also superb.
Yes.
They really deserve recognition. I used to sing in a choral group, so I know when I hear quality music, they did a wonderful job. Kudos to the choral group.
Thank you, Carl. And to see all the band and choir directors there, it just makes it even better because it shows that it's a whole team effort and it's everybody. It takes a village, and this shows that. So appreciate it. All right. Now we have board recognition. So the first recognition we're going to do is the fifth grade flag essays. And so, Mr. Hyde, do you want to start?
Yeah, so I'll start off. I talked a little bit about tradition. Another word that sticks out to me this evening, and I want to accentuate, is community. And just looking across this community at the various groups, and the notion of it does take a village. Awesome tradition with our fifth grade flag essays and what the American flag means to me. And the word that I would pair with that is learning. Just navigating each of our six buildings that have a Memorial Day recognition that is exclusive to their community and involves community members. Veterans come and are celebrated in various ways. It's really awesome to see the tight-knit community we have on a broad scale, but then that nuance that each building brings that really makes it heartfelt for the kids. And just really appreciate all the effort that goes into that. That effort is led by our American Legion Buffalo Bill Post 347 out of Leclerc, Iowa. Tonight, we are going to recognize each school's flag essay champion, and we will have them introduce their family, who is here as well as their principal and their teachers. So I want to especially thank the Legion, the American Legion 347, Buffalo Bill Post. I want to thank our fifth grade teachers and all the teachers that lead up to the incredible narratives, the compositions that the kids put together. It's not just fifth grade, but we are very grateful for the fifth grade teachers who are here to recognize and celebrate and honor the children as well. And then, of course, our administration that is here too this evening to recognize the children. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Rob Kane from Buffalo Bill Post to introduce each of our winners.
All right. Thank you, Tony. So again, like you said, my name is Rob Kane. I was honored enough to take over for Bob Brockhaus, who has been doing this for many, many years. Most of you all know. I would be amiss if I don't thank Missy, who really keeps everything on track and up to speed. So a great thank you goes out to her. I wasn't able to actually hear the winning essay of all of them because I was on my 40th anniversary trip this year for the first couple, so I'll get to hear it here today. But I do want to let you all know that I do have recordings of all of the essays. I put together a radio show, and it will be sent out. I'll send it to Missy, and she can send it out to whomever would need that as well. But it'll be played on the Saturday following Flag Day, and obviously through the flag essay. So that will be available as well. So I will mention the winners and have them stand up and introduce their parents while they're here. So we'll start with Forest Grove. Kayson Echols. Congratulations.
My mom, my little sister, my dad, my principal, and my...
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
From Pleasantview is Brooke Robbins. Here, Brooke? Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. How about from Bridgeview Elementary, Kinley McGrath?
So Kinley is sick, so, we know. So we wish her well, send her well vibes, but I'm here to represent her.
Okay. So a round of applause. And then how about Ada Zalvan?
Yes.
Now our overall winner is Lily Aldridge. You want to go ahead and introduce your folks and stuff? Okay. Lily? Allow as best you can for everyone to hear your essay. And I want to congratulate you and let you know that the Pleasant Valley School District is outstanding in participation. Ninety-three percent of all fifth graders submitted an essay. And out of all those essays, you were chosen as the number one for the area. So out of 393 different ones, you were selected the winner. So if you want to go ahead and read that for everyone?
What the flag means to me, by Lily Aldridge. Sacrifice. Sacrifice is the most defining trait that comes to my mind when I observe the American flag. Whether it's waving through the breeze like hair in the wind, or proudly worn on the shoulder of an Whether it's waving through the breeze like hair in the wind or proudly worn on the shoulder of an officer, it reminds me of the lives lost and the tears shed by countless families. Many people rewrite about how the flag represents freedom. And I don't disagree, but freedom is a luxury that wouldn't exist without personal sacrifice or people laying down their lives for one another. This is extremely important to me, especially since my uncle laid down his life on April twenty-ninth, 2022. As a deputy sheriff for the Knox County Police Department, he made the ultimate sacrifice to protect a town from a criminal. Since then, my view of the world changed along with my perspective of the flag. Previously, I saw simple stars and stripes. But now I see the sacrifice of all the soldiers, first responders, and veterans who gave their lives to keep us safe. Having experienced heartfelt loss in my own life, I feel that I can connect with all the fallen soldiers and their families. Now, when I look at the red, white, and blue, I see all the lives lost, including my uncle Nick's, and the freedom we enjoy as a result. This truly is the ultimate sacrifice. And in this, we need to remember to not take it for granted and to be grateful to all the soldiers, veterans, and first responders who put their life on the line every single day. The next time you look upon the flag, I hope you're reminded of these words. Greater love has no one than this, to lay down one's life for one's friends, John fifteen thirteen.
So next, I would like to have you present this flag to these guys. And if we could get her principal and teachers and family up here to take a picture quick, that would be great. Whoever do the presentation, come around. Well, let it come around here. Guys? Guys, prepare for a picture. We'll stand facing this way. Come over here, I'm going to present. Present it to... Ready? Get it?
Can't see Mrs. Richardson.
That's okay.
There's a whole bunch.
All right, thank you.
How about taking it to everybody?
All right, guys.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Guys, we'll spread out here a little bit, will we? Yeah.
Before we dismiss, I would like to just, gentlemen, if you could just share your name and your years of service like you did at the assemblies, so that we can recognize that. And again, we express our deep gratitude for you orchestrating and being present for all of these awesome celebrations.
My name is Don Druck. I was in the Navy during Vietnam, seventy to seventy-three. And in the Army from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-four in Germany. And I'm the post commander at three forty-seven.
My name is Carl Kryling, retired senior chief petty officer, U.S. Navy. And I retired, I went in in nineteen sixty-eight, retired in nineteen ninety-one. And then my wife brought me back here to Iowa with her. And I joined the American Legion Post three forty-seven in nineteen ninety-six. Been a member ever since, and I've held every position in the post over the last twenty-eight years. And I really enjoy serving the community by this function here.
Yeah, I'm Rob Kane. I was in the Air Force, the Iowa Air National Guard over in Des Moines. I worked on the A-seven aircraft as munitions specialist. So took care of the machine guns on the aircraft and loaded and then safetyed all the bombs when the planes returned.
Jared Richardson, Master Sergeant, United States Air Force, retired. Twenty-four years, eighteen days, served as a security forces member. That's law enforcement, security, integrated defense, deployed to the Persian Gulf, Desert Shield, Desert Storm, Operation Iraqi Freedom, and a ton of other deployments. And I am also the post service officer for the American Legion Buffalo Bill Post three forty-seven, where I assist vets in helping them get the benefits that they deserve, along with helping the family and the rest of the community with any, anything, any needs that they may have.
I forgot to say one thing. Mr. Richardson also serves now as a terror at the elementary. How old are your kids that you do care about Bridgeview?
All of them.
So he is still a student. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Again, it's a great presentation. You were up against a lot of...
Thank you, guys, for all your service and all your times given. Students, again, so proud of all of you and what you've accomplished. Your letters were excellent. And again, you are a real role model for us when we hear you read your stories and the heartfelt statements that you put in there. So again, thank you. It's something that Mr. Hyde mentioned, we enjoy this every single year, going out to all the schools and listening. So again, be very proud of what you've done and just a small representation of what many of the kids did in many ready. So thank you again, parents, should be very proud of your children. Thank you.
One more recognition, and that is school board recognition.
I'm late.
I think next year when we do this recognition, we'll do it first. And then we'll let everyone leave it for that. So again, to our two in the audience right now and anyone watching, the month of May is school board recognition month. So in all honesty though, just a sincere thank you for your service and dedication to helping the students of Pleasant Valley. This year's motto is propelling students to new heights. You know, I think many times when you look at the work you do, people don't understand necessarily the work of a school board member and the work that goes into it. You know, during your workday, you wear many, many hats. But when you come to this board table, you're wearing one hat that makes a difference for all of our kids. And working together as a team to make sure we are moving to the next step and always looking forward. So with that, I say thank you to all of you for your service, to the students of Pleasant Valley, to our staff, and to everyone in the community. So with that, with a small token of appreciation, I will give you your certificate from IASB. And again, really just thanks to Forest Grove, and as Dr. Wogly had mentioned, for the food and the succulents this evening. Just as a small token for all that you do, but know that you are greatly appreciated for what you do as well. So I can't say thank you enough on behalf of the district. So with that, Adrian Miller. Congratulations. Brent Ayers.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Catherine Conklin.
Thank you.
Doctor Wogly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Molly Brockman.
Doug Camercher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, thank you, and let's give them a round of applause.
Now, moving on, we will go on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a moment.
The consent agenda is presented.
Yeah, one question. So on the consent agenda, as far as enrollment for kindergarten, so I know we've been approving, last, I think the last maybe we just approved some, but I was just looking to see the open enrollment numbers for the kindergarten. Is that growing or is that staying pretty consistent with previous years?
I would say pretty consistent with what we saw this last year right now. Although with that said, our kindergarten numbers are about the same as last year, which means we have two years of smaller numbers than we had anticipated. But I would say with the open enrollment, I'd be interested to see what transpires a year from now because they've locked it back down to March first.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? And I'll take a moment.
Anybody else? I move with the order to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ayers, second by Ms. Wheeler, to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, approval of bills, general funds.
The general fund warrants be issued in total of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars and ninety-three cents. Payment of invoice is presented.
Motion by Ms. Conklin, second by Mr. Smith, that the general fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Nutrition fund.
I move that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in a total amount of ninety-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-two cents and payment of invoice is presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ayers, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the nutrition fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Elementary junior high activity fund?
I move that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-four cents and payment of invoices is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Ayers, that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed? High school activity fund?
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in a total amount of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents and payment of invoice is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the high school activity fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Management fund?
I move that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of forty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and payment of invoice is presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Camercher, that the management fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Capital projects fund?
Move that the capital projects fund warrants be issued in a total amount of five hundred and eighty-three thousand, thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents and payment of invoices is presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the capital projects fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? The PUP or Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund?
I move the Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund warrants be issued in a total amount of fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and payment of invoices is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Camercher, second by Mr. Ayers, that the PUP fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Debt service fund?
I move that debt service fund warrants be issued in a total amount of two million, a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred dollars and payment of invoice is presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Conklin, second by Ms. Brockman, that the debt service fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Student construction fund?
I move that the student construction fund warrants be issued in a total amount of sixty dollars and fifty-five cents and payment of invoice is presented. Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Smith, that the student construction fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Internal service fund?
Move that the internal service fund warrants sixty-five ninety-two to sixty-five ninety-three and ACH thirty-two oh two to through thirty-two oh five be issued in the total amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and fifty-one cents and payment of invoices is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Ayers, that the internal service fund warrants sixty-five ninety-two to sixty-five ninety-three and ACH thirty-two oh two through thirty-two oh five be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Trust fund?
I move that trust fund warrant be issued in a total amount of one thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents and payment of invoice is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Wheeler, that the trust fund warrant be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, there's not old business, but we do have some new business items. We will start with the five oh four and special education update. Ms. Kenyon?
So I will try not to talk, talk, go over the time limit that Mr. Ayers was talking about earlier, right? Or the word limit.
The word quota.
The word quota, okay, for the evening. So board members, and Bernie's going to have to share with me, and Tony and Mike will share, and then Debbie and Brian. But you have, I'm a visual learner, so in front of you, you have a manila folder. And the purpose of this is I am just going to talk through, I chose three, what we affectionately refer to in education as glows for celebrations. So I chose like three areas of glows to share some information with you about tonight. And then some grow areas, areas that we're going to continue to work on. And just thought it'd be a good time as I wrap up my second year as the director of student services, a position you have not had before in Pleasant Valley. So I will just walk through some of these examples of things. So don't judge, don't judge the font of some of these documents. And before we publish anything official, it will all be checked and will have the same font size and font type because I'm very picky about that. But these are just draft items I wanted to share with you. So I wanted to start with our special ed advisory council. That's really been a huge celebration this year. We've met two times, once in November and then once again in March. And all of our parents of children that are on IEPs and five oh fours were invited to attend. Different school districts do that differently. Sometimes there's committees of parents that just serve for a number of years. But we just decided with what we knew that we would welcome the invitation. So we had, at our November meeting, we had, I believe, forty attendees, staff members and parents. And then in our March meeting, we had forty-two attendees. And it was just a really, it was, it was great, a great celebration. Our focus this year was we really want to put out a special education parent handbook. So we know that when our students qualify to be on IEPs, there's a lot of questions and terms that are very confusing. So we worked really hard with our set of parents to basically put a handbook together that we are going to be putting live on our district website this summer. We're also going to make it an expectation that when we have newly qualified kids at the preschool level or at any level, that we will hand a hard copy to families, right? So what I'm really most excited about, so that's your first document in here. All I did, of course, I want you to see the final product, but we're going through edits and drafts to make sure everything looks good. What I really, I put some samples in here, so you kind of got a feel for what's going to go in the handbook. We had a parent say that I had originally written the welcome letter, and it was so great because he's like, you know what, Jill? I think it'd be more powerful if like, could I write that for you and we put that in this handbook? So I love, I mean, if you get a time to read his letter, I love it because it's basically a handbook created for parents, right? And, and parents put this together. That's what we spend our time doing at the meetings. We looked at some examples of handbooks from other districts and talked through what they wanted in a handbook. So that letter is, is really, it's special because I think it's really cool that he felt empowered to write that and have that in there. Another example of something we'll have in the handbook is like a flow chart of how we determine eligibility for special ed, right? So that's what I put in there for you to see. We have a lot of information about transition, seems to be a really big topic for our families of all students, general education students and special education students. And so we are going to lay out, you know, how we move from preschool to elementary, elementary to junior high, junior high to high school, and then even our four plus, like our transition services for those students that go beyond high school. I just wanted to show like at the high school level, we put in some of the requirements. You can even see we have like a graduation checklist we want to put in there. A lot of parents just seem to really have a lot of questions at that level. Again, didn't want to bore you to death, but we have tons of information about like the opportunities out there for like careers after high school, things like that. And then we also debated listing, you know, like printing out these resources. We didn't want to make the handbook pass like fifteen pages long. So we are going to keep these hot links that we know are out there and that hopefully parents feel comfortable just going to if they have questions like about waiver services, how they can prepare for an IEP meeting, things like that. So we're going to keep working, right? It's always going to be a work in progress, but we just feel really excited about that celebration, that we got this developed. I think parents feel really good about it and... I think parents feel really good about it and let you know when it's live and being handed out.
Do you know where, store the virtual copy of that yet?
No.
Okay.
There's Heather, Mrs. Larson, she raised her hand, she might have an idea.
We, all the live website documents are stored in Ed's shared district drive, Google Drive, where they're linked to the website, so that there's just one public-based document.
Thanks.
And you help us with all that, right? So, clearly I'll be talking to her before it gets published.
I wanna commend you for putting this together, because I think it's a great tool for parents of individuals that have a special need or need additional services for some. I think that many of you may know or may not know, but I had an IEP when I was going through school. I was diagnosed with dyslexia in surgery. And, as a child, you know, I was once told that I would not graduate from high school. And so I think that this tool would have been so helpful to my parents and anybody that has some sort of difficulty within school. So I really like this idea, I think that this is great. And, I'm a parent of a child that, that has a 504 plan. And so I think that this will benefit so many, and I appreciate the work that you've put into getting this together and getting it started.
Well, thank you. And like I said, that, and that's, that's what another neat thing about these parent meetings are, and we will continue to do that, is watching the parents even connect in the room with each other. I had the Bettendorf directors specialized call me, she goes, what are you doing over there with your seat? Because I'm jealous, I've been hearing some things. She had some parents go back, and I was like, woo! And I, and Dawn Tagg, Tagg on has been awesome too, admin assistant. She's also a parent of a daughter with special education needs, so very, very passionate about all of this. And honestly, another thing that came from it is, we did end up hosting a recreational activities night in April at the high school. There was snow that night, I think we probably would have had better attendance, but we did have about twenty-five families walk through, and I have to give Dawn all the credit for that. She invited all the organizations, I wish I would have brought a list of them, but like Gigi's was there and, oh, now I'm gonna forget, but they were there, just had booths and families could walk around and get information, because we just wanna be like, these are the rec opportunities available for your, for your children, so.
Well, Ms. Kenyon, I would offer myself, if you would like to invite me to any of the meetings.
I would just, yeah.
I would definitely be interested in, in being a part of that.
Good, good. We're gonna put you on the, the board for it when we, no, the, the connections that the parents have formed with each other, like saying, hey, you know, I have a little one that doesn't understand regulating his emotions, and then they were sharing on their phone like this red, green, yellow thing, and I was like, oh my gosh, I could have used that with my four-year-old. So, I think just providing a venue for them to even, to not even make it structured, like, and Tony, you were at both meetings, and, thank you too, because you were, you were getting in there. We had different parents say, hey, I'll, I'll look at this at home, and they were, I think Dawn was getting a little frustrated, because when you have someone edit the content, right? Like, people have different opinions about like how to, where to put the paragraph and all that. So we probably got a little too much feedback, but I loved it, because some parents are like, oh, I'd love to do that on Google. And Dawn's like, look at all these comments on Google! Opened it up, and I go, hey, it's their handbook, not ours, so, that was fun, that was a huge glow.
I think, you know, creating that community for those parents is, um, so.
Agreed. Agreed, yeah, and I think you can have fear that it could be ugly, and that parents that maybe have a concern with a teacher or the process. And we had a couple parents that I got the opportunity to talk to, but everyone was so respectful with the norms. And know that that's not the venue, right? You have some concerns, let's, let's talk about it with, you know, the school and the appropriate people. So, I don't feel like any of our parents came with, with a bad agenda, they came for, for a good thing, so, that's awesome. That's, that's one huge glow. So I won't talk this long for everyone, because you'll be here all night, right? So a second glow that I'm very proud of, and I can't take a lot of credit for this either, but our section 504 process in the district. I just feel super great, we've spent the last year and a half, and I wanna recognize Kevin Pennekam, Stacy Geisick, Liz Bornhoff, Darren Erickson, Stephanie Sire, Jason Jones, Dr. Hicks, Ellie Curtis, Ellie Thomas, and myself. We formed what we call the Section 504 Task Force. And what we did is, we basically just came together and started to meet once a month over the course of the last two years to review all the legal guidance. We weren't doing anything wrong in Pleasant Valley, I wanna, I wanna be clear with that. We had a handbook that's on the district website now, that I believe maybe was like from 2011. We just really felt like we gotta revisit that and, and make sure everything's up to date. And we spent so much time reviewing federal and state law, and had so many great discussions, and I'm so excited. I think we really could probably take our show on the road. But, we, what came out of this is that we have, and I just gave you a little sample, because it will bore you to see it all, but we have developed a 504 staff handbook. So we are doing, going through a very consistent process in all of it, determining eligibility, all that. One thing we didn't have in the district was a district committee that made the decision about eligibility. And the state and federal law really recommends that, like, right? Like, instead of like one person kind of saying yea or nay, we have a team now. So those team members are Jason Jones, myself, Dr. Hicks, and Stacy Geisick. And every two years, we've agreed to like filter out that, those roles. And we meet, we had to meet like twice a month, I should have brought numbers with me. And we actually go through any kids that are being, any students that are being brought up to see if they're eligible for a 504. And then we give it back to the building facilitators. And we follow, I just put a flow chart in here, but we basically outlined seven stages of a 504 and, and what has to happen in each stage. So I gave you a little tidbit of like stage one, the concern, stage two, the request and referral. And we really have just made this staff-guiding handbook, so everyone is following a consistent process for every student. And it's been, Brian knows, because I've, I've made a lot of comments, to see the growth in Jason Jones and Dr. Hicks and Stacy and myself, like, we don't always agree. So what's awesome is, we're sitting here, and we're, I mean, we are looking at the data, we are going back to what qualifies a 504, is it a significant need? You know, where is the disability impacting the student? And, and we are having discussions that have sometimes been uncomfortable. But what's been awesome is just, I just am so proud of them, because we have pushed each other to keep learning and growing and asking questions. Our most recent work has involved like the intersection of our health plans and 504s. In the state of Iowa, they have some guidance, but it's not recent, it's like from 2017. So we've just really been reading that document, we've brought the nurses in to understand, like, a student can have both of those plans, but when might it be a 504? When might it be a health plan? And that all came about because of a question Jason asked, right, at a meeting. And then all of a sudden, we had two meetings where we're like, let's dig into the legal, legal guidance there, and let's look, and they're already like, oh, do you have meetings on our calendar for next year? So I just, I feel really good about the 504. I know I had asked Jason and Tia and Stacy if they could attend tonight, and all three of them were super busy, because I just wanted them to like maybe share a statement with you of, of their personal growth and being part of that team. And it's not always fun, right? We've, we've had to say no, we, we always wanna do what's best for students, but we have had some students that don't meet qualification criteria for a 504. That doesn't mean we don't do things to help them, and that's not always easy. But because we have a process, I can say as of now, the noes have been accepted by families. I mean, there's a reason Bernie and Tony aren't on the committee, because we have to have a way for families to file a grievance and have neutral people who haven't been involved. And that would be where Tony and Bernie would step in if there was ever like a grievance or something about disagreeing with the decision. So that's felt really good.
I think that those difficult conversations that you spoke about shows the professionalism that we have working within our district. Although we may not agree with everything that anybody is actually saying, we can still walk out of the room, still respect each other.
Correct, correct. Absolutely. And our, you know, our final grow is just that, I think I've talked about this before, but we've participated in a administrative book study, The Six Shifts to Improve Special Education and Other Interventions. And that's been really fun, once a month, with all of our building administrators and our district administrators. We've read chapters, discussed philosophies, and really as a group, I just wanna read these belief statements that have come out of this book. And we're gonna continue work on how we bring these belief statements to light. So, we've read the whole book and we've met through the year. And belief statement one is that instruction delivered by a highly qualified person will have the greatest impact on student learning, classroom or behavior. Belief statement two, all teachers need professional learning on highly effective strategies. Belief statement three, students who struggle need more time and focused intervention from a specialist. Belief statement four, students are general education students first. And belief statement five, building schedules must enable teachers to be able to collaborate regularly. So what's, I, I just think, and Tony and Bernie, I'm sick of being the only one talking, and Brian, I know you were involved too. If there's anything from the book study that you, you guys wanna add, it's just been a fun process again to engage in conversation and challenge our thinking about how we serve all of our students. Who's anything to add?
I, I would just add that the, I wanna thank Jill for asking the questions and unearthing the idea for our administrative team to get together and do that. And, and the book is titled The Six Shifts in Special Education, or something like.
Yeah, no, you're right.
And it, the, the title is so very misleading, because it really is not exclusively about special education. It's, it's about meeting all learners where they are and growing them. And, and TSS, multi-tiered system of support. And so, it's, it's cultivated, it's, it's initiated fantastic conversation amongst our leadership team that pushes us to think differently. And grateful to the board for continuing to support the development of our team, because we have to come to the table and have those hard conversations in order to grow as a district in service of every kid here.
Well, I think we all know at this table, that each one of us is completely different. We all can't fit in as where whole, you know, whole, and, and we have to be able to provide the education for all. Whatever that means and whatever that looks like, we have to help them succeed.
Absolutely. So that's, it's, it's been a good, great book, there's a lot of good ones out there, but this was one recommended by the, the AEA as a book study option. So, just, just a few grows or areas we wanna keep working on. Paraeducators, we wanna continue to work on that. And I will tell you this year, there's a statewide network of special ed directors. I think we meet four to six times a year, and paraeducators has been the focus topic. So, we're not the only district that continues to analyze. So, so really, it kind of, it kind of boils down to like ensuring everybody understands what appropriate roles and responsibilities are of paras. We wanna develop a process for how do we determine whether a student needs para-support and how much support do they need? And how do we tier that off when they don't need it anymore, right? We wanna, we wanna build independent students. We're working on a systematic way of documenting the para-support on our IEPs. How do we schedule paras? And then that training and professional learning and onboarding for our paras, which I know is something with the Director of Human Resources and something that Chris Smith has talked about, is how do we, how do we onboard our staff so they wanna stay working with us? And another thing we also wanna look at with paraeducators is just that, you guys have all brought that up, that para-compensation. How do we compare? And Brian's gotten some initial figures to me. And what I should have stated is that we have formed a helping committee, and we've only met twice this year, so I, I see the work going into next year and maybe a year after. Where right now, we just have administrators and myself, we will eventually bring teachers and even paras. But, we just first met to prioritize what we wanna work on in our, in our system. And I know Brian, what I was meaning to say is, he's gotten surrounding districts information to me as far as pay and benefits. So that committee is gonna work through that. And we just wanna keep honoring the great people we have, but also use them effectively and efficiently, right, for our students. So, another thing is, we did offer three district trainings this year for paras. And I, and I feel like the sessions went pretty well. The first one was just about what's your role and what does Iowa say? They have a guiding document about what paras should and shouldn't do in the classroom. And then in January and April, we did a session on de-escalating behaviors, which was really good. And then just how do you, how do you support, but then like start to fade your supports to where you can just prompt students to work on their own? I'm super excited, because Brian has agreed to let us utilize two wonderful gentlemen from the AEA. I can't remember their official titles, but it's Nick Swanson and Ben Layer, right? Are they social workers? They are going to lead a Building Stronger Brains session, like, we're offering like four different modules for all of our paras to get paid for to go and, and get this training next year. I should have included that document, but it's about working with different students that learn differently and understanding all that. And other surrounding districts, I think North Scott, maybe it wasn't North Scott, participated in this like a year ago, and Bettendorf did this last year, and they just had wonderful like turnout and success. So that's being offered to all of our paras for training next year. So that's really exciting. I put in here, it's really confusing, but one of the things I think we'll start to pilot next year, as we determine when a student needs support, instead of just saying, hey, they need an adult within three hundred and ninety minutes a day, right? Really going through intentional steps of determining where and how and why. So these were just some documents I was gonna show you from a seven-step process. You can use, some districts in Iowa, I believe Waukeze just started piloting this. So I was kind of waiting to maybe not be the first district that piloted it, but you can see it really embeds a lot of steps into determining para-support. And I think being clear about that with parents is important too, instead of them just saying, I want an adult with my child all day, is, how do we help them understand like our ultimate goal is to build your students' independence? And when do they really need the help? And when can we just use those natural supports that come in the classroom, right? Like other students and things like that. So, lots of work to do with paras, we'll get there. Just the continuum of services, when I use that, that word, it's just being able to offer what any student needs at any time. So, one of the things that we continue to work on is just still clearly defining like how our, currently we have our classrooms that we consider self-contained with our students with autisms. We have three of them at Forest Grove. We moved our behavior disorder self-contained classroom to Riverdale Heights for next year. And then our intellectual disability classroom at, two sections at Pleasant View. So at the elementary level, we just continue to have those discussions of, I don't wanna say what, what type of profile of a student goes to these programs, but just clearly defining when a student might need that level of services. We're really gonna work on that next year. One of our goals was to get that strat two LDBD licensure at all of our elementary buildings, and you know, we had to shift some staff around to get that for next year, which wasn't super fun. It's never fun to, to have to move staff, but we're excited that we'll start the year with those strat two LDBD licensed teacher at every building. Bridgeview was one that hadn't had that licensure, they'll have that licensure and a teacher next year. And we, we have some complex kids with more needs, so it's, it's really a good thing that we're getting there. And we just keep working on that, because we have to make sure we're offering that continuum at all of our buildings. And then just, we could, we just continue to develop processes and procedures, which isn't fun. Sometimes I like to tease Dawn and say she's the, you know, the procedure police. However, policies and procedures are good, because being clear is good for the teachers, good for the staff, good for everybody, so they can focus on their job, which is serving students. So, I just put a few examples in here of, actually just two examples of, you know, one of, one of the things we created was an IEP compliance checklist. So when you're writing an initial IEP, they don't have, no one has to turn this in, but it's just for our, our teachers, special education teachers to know, this is what you do and these are the steps, right? If it's a yearly IEP, because we have to do a yearly review, here's what you do. So just documents like this and a handbook, different things like this, this is something that I have to laugh about, the IEP data checklist. I think everyone wanted to throw darts at Dawn, administrators and staff, when she first explained it, and now like they just talk in this language. So every time we have a new IEP or a yearly review, we need all the information to come to technology, to accounting, to our student services. And so Dawn created this checklist, like this is what you need to do and why, so they have to get it to her. And then what's awesome is she actually had links in this checklist about the why, the special ed funding and what it's based on, like how much we get per student and all that. And then, also like the leveling, I think is on the next page, like what all that equates to. And it's so funny that I've heard teachers be like, oh my gosh, that makes so much sense, I get it now. So it's just developing those procedures that hopefully will just become habit, that really just help the system run better. And it's funny, because they'll say to Dawn, like, oh, you need to make this change on our master case load sheet, and she's like, not till I get this sheet. Right, like it's become, it's become funny. And like I think it was Chris Welch said to me, I'm so annoyed at that, at that thing at first, but now I just take it to IEP meetings with me, and I'm like, remember, we have to do this and get this to Dawn. So, it's, it's neat to see some of the systems, I'm sure some of them aren't fun, right? Tried to kind of systematize our extended school year services this year, and I, it was a big change for some of our teachers and how we did business. But we need to, we need to be offering all of our students the same thing throughout, realizing they all have different needs, but, that's systematizing really.
Jill, can you share, you're on the path to de-escalation, I thought you were gonna say something else, but can you talk about the bus driver training we did this year?
Oh yes, I wish I could share that. So we sent our new sped instructional coaches, Liz Bosworth- So we sent our new sped instructional coaches, Liz Bosworth and Alicia Krenzian. Krenzian. To, in April training, all of our bus drivers were getting some training with Harley and Stacy through Durham.
Safety for Durham.
And they came in and we said, okay, this can't be real formal, right? Like, you got to read your audience and it can't be real long. So they came in with a bunch of donuts, right? And they put together, I should show, it's so cool. It has like a bus behind it and they titled it something funny, like On the Road. And they basically did this like 20-minute presentation about how we deal with a student with behaviors on the bus. And I'm not kidding, those two came back glowing. I might even have a picture. They loved it. Like, bus drivers told them it was amazing. They're like, will you guys come back like once a year and do this? Like, and they were so excited because they put this presentation together and went and did it. And they really are like, because it's hard if you don't have the training in dealing with kids with behaviors and you're driving a bus by yourself. That's huge, right? So they were asking all kinds of questions, like, what do we do if this happens? And they were talking through scenarios and they're just like, it was so awesome. So that was a really big success too. And their slide deck was awesome. And of course, the donuts probably helped too. But I'll have to find the photo of the two of them after. They sent me a photo and said something like, we're the bus, I can find it and email you guys, we're the bus professional learning rock stars or something like that. So that was fun.
Well, Mrs. Kenyon, I would make a recommendation that if you have the opportunity to pilot something, I would encourage you to do so. The knowledge, the passion that you possess in listening and talking to you regarding these items within a school district, a lot of people could benefit from that and bring to their school district. So don't ever shy away from being the first.
Like our SEEK, right? Yeah. No, I love that. And I honestly will say, I'm humbled too. I've learned, especially the behavior realm. I worked with the best behavior specialists anyone could ask for. They called her Little General because she was very short, but man, she knew how to deal with behaviors and going into holds and restraints with her. I mean, I get it. If you're not natural with dealing with students with behaviors, it is not easy. And I always think of that because I think of my own learning and I'm like, gosh, I've come so far, right? And just knowing what kind of language to use with students that are struggling and what you react to and not react to. So it does take, it takes a village and we've got some great people here. So it's been fun. And I don't want to say everything's been perfect, but we'll continue to work on those grows and we'll get there.
I don't think anything is going to be perfect.
Yeah, right.
Because if we think that it's going to be perfect, we're going to fail.
Correct.
There's always room for growth.
Yes, yes.
Just because you take a stumble does not mean that it's not successful.
Exactly. You guys want to know about anything, ever, anytime, always ask, right? You're always welcome. I love that. I'm going to hold you to it. You can be invited to the SEEK meetings. Invite all of you guys, actually, but you ever want to just come to one of our trainings or whatever, you're welcome.
The one thing I want to add is just that, thank you for adding the family portion, getting the parents out there and inviting them to get in that process. Because there's some of them, they're blind to that, and now that they're being involved, they feel like they have a voice and they can bring up something, you know? Maybe this person isn't experienced this, but we have, so getting that out there and giving them the opportunity to be part of that process.
Yeah, it's been awesome. It's been great.
Just create that partnership between the district and the family. And I think when that partnership's not there, it is hard to collaborate. It is hard to communicate and to accomplish common goals. But through them being a part of the process, they see the challenges and you guys are transparent with the challenges we face as a district. And I think that helps them come with ideas that you guys can work through together, which is a great step in the process and the relationship.
They've actually asked for de-escalation training, you know, to use strategies at home. And I was hesitant at first because I didn't want to do the, we use the blue card CPI where we certify certain staff to be able to go into holds or restraints. We don't do that very often in this district. We're actually really lucky. And the bigger picture of all that is the de-escalation. So at first I was like, oh, we don't want to like blue card parents to make them certified to go into the right hold, but we can take other pieces of that training. So that'll definitely be something I think we offer next year. You know, they really wanted to maybe separate out into like elementary and secondary levels. And they even talked about like a park playdate. And we can, like Dawn and I were talking, we can help facilitate all that, but we wouldn't have to like organize a playdate at the park. But we could certainly do the reservations and do simple things and then not have to do anything except let the families show up. But it's really cool to see that connection. And I know SEEK started before me, so I'm not trying to say I started it and did anything. I just think we kind of revamped it with really trying to have a focus on that handbook and moving forward, so.
Does it seem pretty spread out as far as like ages, as far as the parents, the families are involved? Is it like spread all the way through the high school level or is it predominantly?
I was trying to think, what do you?
There were early childhood special ed all the way up to high school.
And I think there were a lot where I felt like we need to really hone in on is there were a lot of clarifying questions from the junior high to the high school. And what do I need to prepare my student for, for life after high school if they have special ed needs? I feel like that was the big question, don't you think? Like, so we really have been like, we need to make sure we're communicating the options, right, for careers and transitions.
I know we had that one program that was here earlier this last year.
Yeah, Project Search.
Right, and incorporating them and how parents can reach out.
Absolutely. I know recently we had a couple of questions about our students that are going to access. So I know I'm looking at you, Brian, because I had to learn more about it and we actually pulled the access coordinator in. And any information we learn, we just need to make sure all of our staff know about it too. And you have to stay up on that, right? Because that can change in a community. And with me not being here, I've really, from here, I've really relied on like Dawn and other people to say, hey, here's your contact there. And then we need to get that to the families so they can ask questions, so. Good stuff.
I want to commend Jill for all the work that she's done the last two years. I mean, it's kind of like, it's almost like, not culminating, but it's kind of like the two years of coming together, what's been practiced. You know, it's been fun watching her grow and learn the Pleasant Valley way, the kind of, how the Pleasant family, Pleasant Valley family operates. What I mean by that is, you know, coming from a large district in Minnesota, it was kind of like, just here's what you do all the time and kind of dictate. So we've always joked around, she's like, you get everybody involved and it takes forever to make a decision. But this is the fruits of the labor right here. Where parents are involved, people are involved, and we're making good decisions for kids. And again, the transparency that you talked about, so important. And Jill's done a really good job of facilitating this work and being, having the vision of where it can go, but letting it take time to get to that position so you have the quality work that we're looking for. So kudos to her and the work that she's done.
Thank you for always, for my teammates for always helping me. Because I do, I'm always like, in Inoka, we just say, this is how it is and no one gets to have feedback. Get on the bus or get off the bus. But that wasn't great either. I did 12 years of that, right? Where I was like little robot, like this is the rule, this is what you do. But it's been, it's really been fun for me to learn. It hasn't always been easy, Brian knows that. Sometimes I've been like, what? Like, why are we going through a million steps with this? But it's making sense and I'm getting it, so. And I'm probably making people mad sometimes and that's okay. That's part of this role. If we're doing what's best for kids, that's all right.
So maybe IASB conference is in the right form for this, but this is something worth sharing statewide. I'm just thinking like, this is a great presentation. Your passion right here is just infectious. So you're the perfect presenter for something like.
I think last week we got the thing saying IASB was looking for presenters.
I have actually teased Kevin Penningcamp, and I don't know if he would appreciate me saying this, but he kind of was the right-hand man with me last year in doing that 504 stuff. And we've actually joked, like, I'm like, God, Kevin, I honestly think like, we could take this to like SAI or something. Like, this is great, right? Like, not, it's not me, it's the people. And like, can you imagine like Dr. Hicks and Jason Jones like standing up and talking? I mean, they're so passionate about it too. I would love to see that go. Just what we did to get our 504 process going.
Have a parent come along, right? It's always like the.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Community stakeholders involvement really speaks volumes.
Like Brent, right? Or a parent where we didn't qualify the student, you want to come with and talk about the process? No, they've, it's been awesome, so.
I just remember when we were debating your position in the first place a few years ago. And now that you've been in it the last two years and we see everything that you've done so far, I keep thinking, how could we not have had somebody? Think about all the work that is necessary for this group of individuals and these students and the amount of information that needs to be disseminated. And the fact that we were able to survive as long as we did before we had a dedicated person is, you know, kind of incomprehensible at times to think about that. And I'm so happy that we made that decision because we're seeing, as Brian says, we're seeing the fruits of that. I just had a couple of things. I'm very happy that you are focusing on the para educator issue. Because you guys probably saw on the consensus, I know Adrian saw it, about the amount of para educators that have served in the nation. And although it's not unusual for us to see that, it's just really difficult to see turnover, especially with our para educators and our special needs teachers. Because consistency for our students, for that group of students is really important. So if there's a way that we can get a handle on it, that'd be great. So I think, you know, examining that and having a focus on that, I think will be really helpful for the ultimate success of the program and for those students. And then you mentioned several times in your presentation here, you know, the AEA.
Yes.
And, you know, a year ago, I don't think anyone's even been talking about this because it wasn't on anybody's radar screen about what was happening with the AEA. Now we're in the reality of what's happened with regards to the AEA. And you've mentioned it several times, Jill, and of course, we know how important the AEA is to our special needs program. And although it's still evolving with regards to what we're going to be handling, I'm just wondering if are you in a position to give us any information on what you and your department plans on doing with regards to the changes that are going on with the AEA? Since you've relied so heavily on them for a lot of these things? Or is it too early to tell?
Besides crying? No, I was just saying to Brian this morning, like honestly, the fact that for special education, things for the most part, the next year will remain the same.
I don't know the next year, but.
I can't imagine, I mean, I'm being totally honest when I say this, like the speech therapist we have from the AEA, the occupational therapist, the physical therapist, the challenging behavior team expert, I just.
Consultants.
Consultants, yes. I just, I cringe and I'm always saying to Brian, well, oh, my goodness, if they're only going to do child fine, like who does any fidelity check? I mean, so honestly, I'm kind of freaking out. Like, I feel like I hope, and we have such strong people through our AEA. I just really hope that they decide to stay with the AEA because they're thinking about their own future and their job and how that looks. And I know like we've committed to like being very supportive of the AEA, but I do think we have to continue to have those conversations about what are other districts going to do going into next year, right? Like, because I do, I do believe we have people who would love to come work in Pleasant Valley from them, but we want to stay in collaboration with the AEA at the same time. So balancing that, I think is difficult. Like, it's new turf to navigate. I don't even know if I'm answering your question, but it's just.
I don't know if there's an answer. I just.
I don't know either.
I just want to make sure that's always on our radar screen to make sure that we don't, given the situation, I know that you will be very cognizant of this, to make sure that we are staying on the offense with regards to making sure we have the resources we need. Because I don't know if we can heavily depend on the AEA, given what's happened and the uncertainty of not just organization, but the people within the organization that we've had long-term relationships with.
And here's the, here's the good thing, there's been long-term relationships. So what I feel confident about saying is, you know, of our SLPs that have worked in our district, if any of them are going to jump ship, I hope that they have enough relationship with like a Tony, with a Brian, you know, Bernie's relatively new, me, that they would give us heads up. And then we start those conversations, like, we want you serving our kids, so what are we going to do, right? Like, I just feel like that open communication with them. And we've lost, on the general ed side, we've lost some really powerful, and Brian can share more about that, some of the best people, they've left. And it's like, now what do we do? Because who are we going to get if we stay with the AEA? Or do we jump on like grabbing this person who might do their own contract? It's a hard position to be in, but we have to have the best people.
I think that people realize the amount of dependency we have with the AEA that we've had for the last, for several decades in so many different areas. And when I've been meeting with several different teachers, actually, in groups from different schools, whether it's the high school, the middle school, or the elementary. Almost in every conversation I have, the AEA is brought up at least once if not twice about something that they've done to help these teachers or to help things in the classroom or for resources or other things. I mean, we are a lot more dependent on the AEA than anybody can realize, especially, and the only people that they know that are the teachers and the paraeducators. We use them as a resource, right, Mr. Struse?
Yeah, so we meet, superintendents are meeting tomorrow night to look at the services and what the AEA can offer. I think Jill is spot on. What we've talked about is I'm very fearful. On the general ed side, many of the consultants have left already, which is going to leave a real hole in some of the things that we do on the education side. And if that is any indication of what could happen a year from now with the special education, we could be in real trouble a year from now. So it'll be real interesting to see. I'm not sure, I don't know what the original intent, if they thought it'd be like this, but it is changing across the state in terms of general ed services and people who are just like, I have a family, I need a job, I need consistency, they're leaving. And I can tell you right now, three people that we worked very hard with math, science, and ELA is still there, but two of them have left, who've been many hours in our district with math studio days, have left. And that's a big, we'll fail for our teachers from a professional growth standpoint. So that's scary. Let's have a see how it works out.
I hate to bring like this great positive talk and bring negative into the negative.
No, that's.
But the reality situation. The one thing that I would ask, Ms. Kenyon, maybe you can work on after next year, because I've been getting a lot of questions regarding this is, how, from special needs parents, is how do I navigate my child now through the public education school system, not the AEA is having its changes? How do I do that? What do I need to do? Because they obviously are the one group that's very concerned about this. So if you can maybe come up, once we know in the future what you think is going to be the best course of action, and you guys all decide that, to come up with another handout about for our special education and special needs families, so they know how to navigate their child through the system, given the current environment that we're going to be in. I think that would be really important.
That's good feedback. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you so much for that wonderful.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I did not mean to take a lot of time.
No, that's great.
And there's other programs too, under my department, that, you know, I'd be remiss, we're not, like our ELP, our Talented and Gifted. Jamie Humm does an awesome job of facilitating our English language learners. Our At Risk is something I need to dive into, but special ed was definitely the one area that probably has taken a large majority of my time. And I think like, Mr. Struse and I have talked and that was expected right away. But branching out into those other areas like 504 and At Risk is still a goal of mine. And you just have to rely on really good people that are passionate in those areas to kind of step up and lead some stuff too, so.
And I would recommend, I've read just a little bit of the book that you guys were talking about. And if anybody, the board members want to like, you know, take a glance at it, I think it's really instructive just to see what they did as an administrative team and the different lessons they learned. Because as Mr. Hyatt said, it's not really, the name is kind of a misnomer. There's so many aspects of that book that are relevant to just everyday educational experience.
You could borrow Mr. Hyatt's book if you could get through all the thousands of.
Notes.
It's just chucked. Well, I was going to say, you can borrow mine because I don't have tons, but yeah, it's a good book.
A process, old school.
I was just going to hold this up to tease you, but.
Well, there is no motion on that, so we will go on to the next order of business, which is going to be the April 2024 monthly financial report. Mr. Kenyon Smith, you were really quiet last evening, so now you're going to give your chance.
Next three items are mine. Heather's just giving me control on. So yeah, the April monthly financials, more than 10 months through the fiscal year now. Again, nothing really surprised me on the April monthly financials this month. Everything continues to track where we would expect it to be at this point in the fiscal year. Property taxes, you may have noted, under revenue for the funds that receive property taxes, a fairly big jump from a month ago because March, April, and May are the main months in the spring when we receive our property taxes. So you can see, for example, in the general fund, through the end of April, we've now received 96.2% of our property taxes for the year in the general fund. The only other thing I was going to point out, if I scroll down to the capital projects fund, something that wouldn't have been there before, in the actual column anyway, is in April, we received 10% of our bond proceeds from our recent sales tax revenue bond issuance. So that $271,800 that you see for sales tax revenue bond proceeds, that was received in April. And then on May 8th, when we had the closing, we received the other 90% of our bond proceeds. So another approximately $27 million was received on May 8th. So that's just something that wouldn't have been there prior to April on this year's monthly financials. So those are the two things that I was going to point out. Again, everything is tracking where we would expect it to be though, through the end of April. I'll take any questions if anybody has any questions.
So I think I may know the answer to this. The management fund is down 30% in a budget perspective from last year to this year. I notice our expenses continue to rise. Is that because of the discount they give folks on their real estate? I can't remember if this is the fund that you're not aware of or not.
Actually, a year ago, we had bumped up how much we were levying for property taxes in the management. Actually, a year ago, we had bumped up how much we were levying for property taxes in the management fund. And part of the reasoning for that had to do with the increasing costs that we're seeing on our property and liability insurance and, you know, those type of insurances. And so we had purposely, a year ago, in the two, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, bumped up the amount we were levying for property taxes. This year, the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, we were able to bring it back down. We didn't need to bump it for a second year in a row, so that's the reason for the thirty percent or so decrease in property taxes in the management fund. We're going to have to keep an eye on it though, because, um, actually, uh, Brian and Lori Wakeland and I just met to discuss some information we received from our district's insurance person, Tate Featherstone. We could be looking at like a twenty-five percent increase on our property and liability insurance for next year. So we're going to have to keep an eye on that, along with early retirements that could be coming in, which also could pay for it out of the management fund. So we may have to bump the management fund levy rate up possibly again, when we look at that next, uh, January, February and stuff.
Thanks, Mike.
And the scary part of insurance is insurance costs are going up and your deductibles are changing, so you're going to have to pay more in a deductible, plus your insurance rates went up. Just like, we're all going to be seeing it in your home insurance as well, in the state of Iowa, it's, it's just changing here, or you're going to be immune from it.
One of the big, and, and Tate is looking at some other option, potential options too. Getting some quotes from another organization called IPSP. And hopefully we'll have that, you know, in the next few weeks or so, and hopefully he can find. We've been with EMC for the whole twenty-four years that I've been with Pleasant Valley, but. With the continuing rate increases and then the drops in coverage, we may potentially need to look at something else. And if that happens, I think we talked about possibly having Tate come to a board meeting to kind of start the thing.
One more question, student construction project. So I'm kind of looking forward to seeing that take off without me in it. I noticed we have about a hundred thousand in the account, and my impression was the plane was getting close to being done. Maybe I'm wrong, but are we going to spend that money, and if we don't, where's it going to go?
I would have to check with Lori Wakeland on that, because I know we're still short.
Aviation fund, yeah.
Yeah.
I know we submitted for a few grants recently, so it makes me wonder if maybe things, and then we weren't aware, but I would be surprised if it were that much. Last I knew, we were in the hole on that account.
Okay.
And that we were hoping to make up the difference when we sell the plane.
We'll find out, get you an email though, appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other questions regarding the, um, April monthly financial reports? Now I will take a motion.
I move the board to accept the monthly financial report for April twenty twenty-four as presented.
Motion by Ms. Scher, second by Mr. Kenwisher, that the board accept the monthly financial report for April twenty twenty-four as presented, roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Ms. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Cockle.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler.
Yes.
Dr. Logland.
Yes. Thank you. Um, our next order of business is resolution naming depositories, and you can see there's an explanation for why we have to do that, and we're going up to seventy-five million dollars. Like, you can see all the different nice banks that were keeping your business here in Pleasant Valley. Um, the, uh, reports, so Mr. Klingensmith?
Yeah, um, you may recall back in December when I presented our annual audit report, comprehensive annual financial report. The auditors got a comment towards the back of the report regarding that we had exceeded our maximum balance at, um. It's one of the, one of the financial institutions that we have our money with, which would be Blackhawk Bank. And so they, uh, recommended that we increase our maximum balance, um, with, with this depository resolution. So what we're doing here is we're recommending increasing each of the financial institutions on here from the current maximum balance of thirty million dollars. Which that would have been last approved in November of two thousand eighteen, increasing it, each of them up to seventy-five million dollars. Currently, in our account, main account at Blackhawk Bank, we actually have about forty-two million dollars in there. And then we just received our bond proceeds, which I was just talking about a few minutes ago. We invested those currently with the next to the last financial institution that you see on this list. The Iowa Schools Joint Investment Trust, which is abbreviated ISJIT. And so we have about twenty-seven million dol- well, or I think it's around twenty, yeah, about twenty-seven million dollars currently invested with them. So that is our recommendation tonight to avoid having that come in the future from the auditors, is to increase our maximum allowable balances at each of the. It doesn't mean that we're going to keep seventy-five million dollars in each of these financial institutions, obviously, because we don't have that much money. But it would at least give us the authority to deposit up to seventy-five million dollars with each of them. Um, and, you know, there, there's always the possibility, for example, that money that we currently have invested with ISJIT, eventually, we could roll that back into the Blackhawk Bank account. In which case, that's why we could need the seventy-five million dollars, so. Take any questions, any questions on this?
I know this is going to sound crazy, but what happens if the bank goes insolvent? We have it all in one spot.
Well, um, we, we are protected by FDIC insurance.
To seventy-five million?
Well, um. I think there's collateral involved, and it's. I'd want to check on that, just to make sure, but.
You could spread it all to the different banks, couldn't you?
We could.
If you, you know, to try and diversify if that was an issue.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm pretty sure it's not an issue, and I'll, I'll double check on that.
And the thirty million, is that something that we just kind of chose at one point in time? Or is that something that, like, is kind of across the board, this is what generally, is what they go to?
It would, it would be an amount that we chose based on how much we had on deposit at that time.
Back in about two thousand and eighteen is when we were doing some of those borrowings.
Predestined borrowings, right, yeah.
Borrowings, so we again had to put them into the bank, we borrowed the money, and that's what caused it to go up.
Yeah, the, these amounts, I think when I first started here, were probably fifteen million dollars. So as the district continues to grow and spending more money, the amount of our deposits has increased. Just like a lot of other things has with our growth in the district.
Other questions at all? If not, I will take a motion.
I move that we approve the resolution naming depositories as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Scher, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve the resolution naming depositories as presented, roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Ms. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Cockle.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler.
Yes.
Dr. Logland.
Yes. Then our next order is, um, new board policy. Uh, first reading of the bond disclosure policy is, Mr. Klingensmith, this is, this is him again, but we had talked about having to now have a policy because of our bond disclosure. So this is a new board policy that we are implementing?
Yeah, this would actually be a board policy regulation. It would, in our numbering system, it would be eight oh two point four R one, bond disclosure policy. So it would come after our post issuance, um, policy, and then our investment policies, what it would come after in our board policies. This is being put in also, um, we're at the recommendation of our bond counsel. Aylers and Cooney, Beth Grove, Aylers and Cooney is our attorney for our bond counsel. The reason that we are, that they are recommending that we put this in is, there has been a recent SEC, which SEC stands for the Securities and Exchange Commission. There has been recent SEC activity and changes to an SEC rule. SEC, if you, if you want to know, it's SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve. It's the rule that requires annual event disclosures. It suggests that the SEC has been focused recently on municipal issuers, which we would be a, a municipal issuer. Most enforcement actions against municipal issuers, like school districts, allege that the municipal issuer was negligent under the securities laws. One way to defend against such, such an allegation is to have a disclosure policy that is followed. So that is the, the main reason for, that they are recommending putting in this, um, new board policy regulation. There are three main instances that this policy addresses, which involve the district's obligations under the federal securities laws. The first, um, reason is the preparation of offer, offering documents when selling securities, such as the preliminary official statement that we just did recently for the sales tax bonds. You may recall that when we did that preliminary official statement, I reviewed it, Brian reviewed it, we actually sent it to all of the board members to review it also. So that is one of the, um, things that is addressed in this new board policy regulation, is the, the documents that are issued when you are offering up securities. The second, um, thing that this board policy talks about is the annual reports after you've issued debt that need to be filed with a, a website called Emma. And Emma stands for. Uh, Electronic Municipal Market Access. That is a website that you can go to and look up, um, lots of information about securities that are issued by municipal, um, securities that are issued. So when you're selling securities with an offering document, like the bonds that we just issued, the district is required to agree to provide annual information about the districts. And if, and its audited financial statements by filing that information on this website called Emma. So that's also addressed as part of this new board policy regulation. And then the third big thing that is addressed as part of this board policy regulation is material event filings on Emma. There are now sixteen events which trigger a notice filing on Emma within ten business days, if those occur. If I scroll down here to. Here, yeah, exhibit A, listed events. There is a list on there of those sixteen items that if any of these things would happen, like I said, we would have to, within ten days, file that on this Emma website. And you can see the list of them there, which hopefully none of these ever happen, but, um, if they were to. Principal and interest payment deficient, or delinquencies, non-payment related defaults, unscheduled draws on debt service reserves reflecting financial, financial difficulties. As I scroll down, you can see the, the list of all the items, and you can see all of them would be very negative things. If they were to happen, that's when we would have to, um, file that report with Emma if any of those things would happen. So that's the other main thing that is covered by this new board policy regulation. So tonight would just be the first reading of it, then there'd be a second reading at the next board meeting, and then the one following that would be when we would adopt this board policy. So again, this is at the recommendation of our bond counsel that we're put, uh, recommending putting this in. I'll take any questions if anybody has any questions on it.
Do we have any questions? And you will see that the format of the way that it is right now in our, um, uh, in our documents is maybe different from the other board policies that we've seen. But by the time that we are in our meeting next time, you will see it in a more familiar sort of.
Yeah, this is exactly how it came to us from the bond counsel, but Debbie. Put it in our format for that.
Yeah, it's okay. It's not, it's not a rush.
Well, it's not Debbie's fault, I didn't get it to her probably until Friday.
So you'll see it in a little different format when you have our next meeting.
So Mike, there's a ten day notice in here, maybe we need some indication of when the board would find out one of these events is occurring, like, almost immediately? Because I assume we would want to be in a special meeting right away to discuss that too.
Yeah, for sure, if any of these would happen.
The reading one's the one that caught my eye, because it's maybe out of our control.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks.
Any questions? All right, so there's no required motion on that. And then our, um, next, um, either, order of business is executive session, um, for personnel.
So Heather has just switched us over off of.
So Heather has just switched us over off of...
You couldn't probably eat them.
So we're gonna go out of closed session, back into open session. And.
Yes, correct.
All right, so if nobody has any other questions for Ms. Zinn, then I would love to take a motion.
I move.
I move the board appoint Leanne Zinn as Pleasant Valley Community School District Director of Human Resources, starting July 1st, 2024.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Brockman, that the board appoint Ms. Leanne Zinn as Pleasant Valley Community School District Director of Human Resources, starting July 1st, 2024. Roll call, will please Ms. statement?
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ken Wisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Tuncle.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Yes.
And Dr. Wagley.
One hundred percent yes. All right, so just some reminders, you guys all should have gotten an email regarding the superintendent evaluation, so don't forget to fill that out. We are in May, wanna try and get that at least consolidated by the middle of June, so if we can have it fill out within the next couple of weeks, that would be great. And remember, you can put comments onto it, and then only myself and you can see those comments, and then I will consolidate it in an anonymous fashion to present to Mr. Struce. So don't forget that, if you did not get an email regarding superintendent evaluation, please let Deb know and she will resend it. Then we have a board meeting on June 10th, which is a regular board meeting at 6:00 PM, and then we have another one on June 24th at 6:00 PM as well. I and Brian are working on getting the IASB to come and do a little work session for us, we might do that in July, is that correct?
Correct.
Board meeting then, depending on what we're gonna be discussing, so we may just tag it on to the end of the board meeting, so it might be a little longer meeting if we do that, and we'll keep you informed on when we're gonna do that, okay?
If you have a specific topic, let Dr. Wagley know here real soon too, because she can tailor it as well.
Yes, I've already told her what I think we should do, at least one, and we could do multiple ones, this is not just one, you know, we can do the one and then say, hey, I wanna learn about this or that, we can certainly have her come and do more. Tammy's very, very good about making herself available, okay? Is there anything else for the good of the order?